Go ahead.
Alright, so I think the camera's recording. Thank you all for coming tonight to the Open Canada Forum. If you guys have any additional questions that you want addressed during the meeting, feel free to grab a pen and a paper from over here, write it down, and put it in the box. If there's still time at the end of the night, we'll certainly work to get through all of those questions that are being asked. I did quickly sift through them and tried to couple up any of them that were duplicate questions based on different people that may have just asked them slightly differently. So if you didn't hear your specific question asked, know that it was relating to the other, one of the other questions. I will just take a quick opportunity to let these four introduce themselves. Nicole planned on being here tonight but had a family emergency come up, so she was not able to attend. And then Joel and Roy and Dean, I didn't hear from, so I'm not sure why they're not here. But probably other commitments that prevented them from doing so. So Tom, if we want to start with you, we'll have a certain time. You'll each have two minutes if you don't take all of that time.
Okay. My name is Tom Marsleck, and I appreciate everybody coming in tonight to hear what we have to say. My wife and I are relatively new to the area. We bought our home in January over Forest Creek, and we moved in at the end of March. And based on my, I'm retired, and based on my experience over the last 36 years working for Honeywell and both financial management and personnel management and managing an $8 million operation for Honeywell, I thought that I could definitely lend some of those skills to the city of Montrose to try to help out. I'm extremely interested in all of the history in this town. Some of it's good, some of it's not so good. There's a lot of history that has caused some of the disturbances and some of the issues that are prevalent in town today that are dividing people. And what I'd like to do as a candidate, or if I'm elected to the City Council, is try to bring those both parties together. I know you hear that from every guy running for City Council. But I believe that if you listen to people and listen to understand where they're coming from and not listen to try to formulate your next response, and if you show respect to people, whether you agree with their point of view or not, I think that respect is key, whether you agree with their position or not. I think a respectful dialogue is really what the city needs right now. So with that, I, you know, there's several things detailed that I'd like to get into at some point in time, but it'll probably come up in the questioning tonight. And with that, I'll hand it over.
Great, thank you. Kirby?
Hi, I'm Kirby Moynihan, I run for City Council. I've been here basically my entire life, you know, through our 3. So, I mean, a lot of the changes that have happened over the last 20 some odd years, you know, I've been here, watched them, heard the gripes from people who've always been around, and the people who are just new to town, and, you know, a lot of them have some of the same complaints, and some of them are different. And I think with my background and work of working with Village Ranch and kids with mental health, and refereeing hockey, and just the big diverse group of people that I've worked with over my life, that I think that I can bring all that experience into being on City Council, and not just what I want or what someone else wants, but what's best for everybody in general. And I don't have some grand plan of, "I'm only running for this one reason so I can fix this one thing that I think is wrong." I want to be here to help everybody. I want to be here to make Montrose not just better for me or for my son, but just better for everybody as a whole. And I think that working as a team and with good leadership, that we can accomplish that.
Great, thank you. Brew?
Hi, I'm Brew Hluth. Most of you here know me. Those of you that don't, I moved here in 2011 with my family. I've got two grown sons, and I have got six grandchildren. I have attended every council meeting with the exception of two because my son was in the military, worked in town. I pay attention. I listen, I ask questions. I was on Park and Rec for four years, both as a member, as co-chair, and then as chair for the last couple of years. I was on planning and zoning. I have run for this seat before. And doing that taught me how to work with people that you don't agree with. There have been several instances where we sat here and argued, and came up with a solution. That's what we have to do. If I'm elected, that's my job. Listen to both sides and bring both sides together to figure out what's going to work for everybody, not just one side. My background is pretty diverse. I have insurance background, accounting background, went to school in nursing, I have a degree in human resources, so I have practical life experience that can be applied to this position.
Alright, thank you, Brew. And last but not least, Sam?
My name's Sam Solars. Me and my wife and daughter moved here about two years ago in the Forest Creek neighborhood, kind of along the same lines as everybody else. I think you're going to kind of get the whole, pretty much the same thing between the four of us. I think the four of us in general, from the people that I've talked to, I mean, we've all got the same vision for this city. I mean, we want to make it great. We want to keep moving forward, doing positive things. I think my background in IT allows me to solve problems. That's what I think, solve problems on a daily basis. And I'd like to take that knowledge and apply that to the city. There's a lot of miscommunication or lack of communication between current City Council family and citizens. And I want to bridge that gap. That's kind of what we're all here for. We're all here running for you guys. And that's where I think I'd be able to help.
Awesome, thank you. Alright, so then, first question, and there's three of them that kind of all run together relating to the concerns here. So, Sam, I'm going to start with you. What is the biggest issue that you see that needs to be addressed within our city?
Yeah, once again, I think it's the lack of communication. I think you guys as citizens, for us as citizens also, I mean, you guys want to be heard. And I think that's lacking right now. And I think, you know, just going out and talking to the people that I have, you guys kind of, you kind of feel a little lost here. We don't know what direction the city's going in, and, you know, I want to be able to help with that. And, you know, kind of make a cohesive unit between City Council and citizens.
Alright, Brew?
Can you give me a question again?
Yes. What is the biggest issue that you see that needs to be addressed within our city?
Oh, there's several. I, of course, agree with what Sam has got to say. There's some financial issues that really have to be addressed. I think our capital improvement plan needs to be reworked. I think we need to look at some of the expenditures that we have. Like it or not, at this point, we are a bedroom community, so we only have houses to base our taxes on. We have to look at that. Everybody's got a bottom line. It all has to be addressed. We've got issues with, you know, financial things, again, water treatment plant capacity issues. We've got complaints about police issues. There's a lot that needs to be addressed. It's hard to pick just one.
Alright, Kirby?
I agree with everything that Brew said. I think there's a lot that we can improve on together, and, you know, like what Sam said too. And I think the biggest thing we can do is work as a team. I mean, it's, it shouldn't be against me versus you, or the council versus the citizens, or council versus city staff, or city staff versus citizens. Everybody needs to work together, create better Montros for everyone, not just your own individual self, but better for everyone as a whole. And I think that if we work as a team, we can accomplish all of that, and we can make it better for everybody.
Alright, and last but not least, Tom?
Well, being number four, that's the top ones. However, you know, we're looking at an average growth rate of 2.5 to 2.8 percent through 2040, I think, in this town. And we did a comprehensive survey back in, it's 2040, Comprehensive Plan, March of '17. And out of the, out of the people that were asked questions or sent a survey, there were like 223 respondents out of 1,000 households, which is a pretty sad turnout. Now, as I went through the neighborhoods knocking on doors, communication is key. We need to all start talking to each other and quit, you know, hiding behind our walls or whatever, and start communicating. And it's a situation where people, you know, a lot of people, they both work, they drive into the cities, they come home, they have time to get kids, they go to bed, and they, it's like groundhog day, they do the same thing over and over again. So they don't have time to be involved and get involved in what's going on in their city government. And I think one of the, one of the prime things that needs to be focused on as a council member is to be that ear for those people and be that voice for those people that don't come to every meeting and don't, you know, get involved in parks and rec, in the planning and zoning and all this stuff. They want to live in our community, they want to live peacefully, they want a nice clean place for the kids to play, and they just want to be happy. And, you know, we really need to focus on making a community that's a place to call home for everybody, not just a select few. So, like I said, communication is key, getting people involved, I don't know how exactly we do surveys and things, work through those issues, but more people that provide input, the better off we are in the week.
Alright, Charlie. Thank you.
Practice that, didn't you?
Alright, so we're going to move on to the next question, which is, what made you decide to run for City Council? And we're going to start with Brew.
When you attend meetings and you read social media, which we all know is a blessing and a curse in this town, there were so many things. And sadly, as I watched things happen over the last year or so, we lost some really good staff people, we lost a good council person, because it became us versus them on the council. It became such a dissatisfying place to be. I was like, "We got to fix this. This is not okay." And a council person should not disturb at your pleasure, be elected by you, and then not be able to do anything because they're not part of the majority. Those three versus two need to figure out how to work together. I might not like 100% of the aspect of an idea you come up with. You might not like 100% of mine. But we can meet in the middle and make things happen. So that was my reasoning for doing this, is figuring out a way to bring everyone together and make it work.
Thank you. Alright, Kirby? Do you want me to repeat it? You got it?
No, I got it.
Sorry.
You know, I really enjoy politics, and, you know, that's not the biggest reason why I run. The biggest reason that I run is because I like helping people. That's why I do the job that I do when I work with people who aren't the most privileged. And, you know, like, I can take other jobs that pay way more, and the pay doesn't matter to me. I mean, even if they're City Council paid, if I didn't get paid at all, I'd do it. I wouldn't care. It's, I'm not here for the money. I'm here because I want to help. I want to be part of the solution. I don't want to be the hindrance, and I don't want to sit there and make it go my way because that's the way that it should be. It should always be about what's best for everyone. And I think that I can keep that in mind no matter what is going on, whether it's in my personal life, or it be that I am a council member, or whatever, even if someone I like. I can keep what's best for everybody else in mind, and I think that's what we need. And that's why I want to be here and, to win.
Alright, thanks. Alright, Tom, you're up.
Well, when I, when we first moved here, you know, being a retired guy, I decided to investigate why I heard such bad things about the city of Montrose. Everybody got told, they said, "Well, where'd you buy a house?" I said, "Montros." They went, "Montros." You know, that was a bad, I mean, it's like, I've heard terms like "loserville" and all these other names, they call Montros. And I wanted to find out why. So I started watching the City Council meetings on video, and attended a couple of them, and decided that, I think there was a little bit of a, maybe a leadership vacuum. No offense to the mayor or the existing council member, Lloyd, I mean, no offense. But there seemed to be a little bit of a leadership vacuum. And somebody needs to, we live in troubled times, and we're in rough waters, and we need somebody that's going to guide and carefully guide the city through tough times. And, you know, I, I mean, I worked for one company for Honeywell for 30 seconds years. I've got a wealth of experience with management and solving problems. When you're in front of a $100 million, a billion dollar refinery manager, and he's got a problem, and he's looking at you to solve it, you better be prepared to look at all the available resources that you have and come up with something that's, is what I'm looking for, palatable for both you, representing your company, and the customer. So I've dealt with some very troublesome, very serious customer Honeywell matters over my, over my career, and I think I have a little bit of skill in terms of being able to maneuver those waters. And I honestly think that a little bit of leadership causes other people to take on leadership qualities too. So you need that one guy to kind of stick his foot in the water and say, "It's cold."
Tom!
Killing me, Tom.
Alright, Sam, last but not least.
Why did I choose to run for City Council? Let's see, when me and my wife and daughter moved out here about two years ago, we moved from Broken Park. I'm sure most of you know the reputation that Broken Park has. We weren't in the greatest of neighborhoods. When we moved out here, don't really know what we found, Forest Creek. We'd kind of like to say it found us. And it has become a great place for me and my wife to raise our daughter. We love Montrose so much, and our neighbors are great. They would drop anything to help a fellow neighbor. Good to have that in Broken Park. I want to keep that going with what we have here. I just want to, I wanted to give back to the city, which has already given us so much in my short two years here. That's mainly why I'm here.
Can I stop you?
Intervention.
Alright, so we will continue with the next question. Kirby, you're going to be first. So it says, "There's a significant amount of time that goes into being a council member. Are you prepared for this change, and how will you handle the time constraints involved?"
I am ready for the amount of time that it takes to do it. And with my job that I have, I can kind of move my hours around with work and everything, so if I need to be somewhere, I can. Plus, a big benefit with my job is that a lot of times, especially during the school year, I'm not working during the day. So if there's something going on, a special meeting or anything like that, or something needs to be attended by a council member during the day, I can be there to do it. We don't have to have just one or two people filling in at all of these meetings, and everybody else just sitting off to the side going, "Well, one of them will take care of it." It's okay. I'll be there to help. I'll be able to make the meetings, and, yeah, I'm ready for it.
Thank you. Tom?
I'll make it real short this time. Two words: I'm retired.
That's impressive. My first is like even though this is going to be here.
Let the buzzer go on.
How am I supposed to follow that?
Yeah. Right, yeah. You're up.
With my job, I can, you know, I can telecommute. So, I mean, I'm pretty much at my house pretty much all hours of the day. Time commitment is, it's not an issue.
Wonderful. Alright, Brew?
I do, I'm very fortunate with my job. We're not micromanaged, so as long as my work's complete, I can come and go as I need. The one thing that I don't, you know, I don't think you guys have been privy to it, but having served in a capacity that I have, there's way more than just meetings. Meetings are a big part of it, but there's so much research, digging, looking, questioning, going to, you know, other council people, what information do you have on this? There's, there's a whole lot more involved, a whole lot of time. I can tell you, with my time on Park and Rec, I was doing something every night. If it was a minimum of one to three hours every night, was something. There is a huge time commitment. So knowing that, I am prepared for it. I've got the time. I don't have little kids, I don't have a dog. I'm good.
You want?
No.
You guys just want a little kid or a dog?
A little dog.
Take that back. You're like a dog.
Alright, we are going to start our next question, which is, if residents start complaining on social media, how as a council member will you choose to handle it? Tom?
Well, so somebody's lobbing hand grenades on Facebook. Basically, it's, it's face-to-face contact, I think is the best way to do it. Social media is really, as somebody mentioned before, it's a great thing in one respect because people get to interact and communicate, but it is also an open-ended attack mode kind of thing, where people can, you know, say whatever they want out of the comfort of their own basement on their computer, and don't realize the emotional or psychological impact it's having on people. When I said before about listening, I think listening is crucial. My thing is to listen, listen, listen. A lot of people, as I mentioned before, will listen because they're trying to figure out what their next answer's going to be, how they're going to respond to what the person is saying, rather than shutting up and listening to hear what the person has to say so you understand 100% where they're coming from. And I think if people take the time to be respectful and to actually listen to what a person's having to say, we can resolve a lot of issues without having to start the Facebook war.
Alright, Sam?
Same thing. I mean, you want to have that face-to-face interaction. You know, I see it in my lab work every day, people just typing away whatever they want to say, just no consequence whatsoever. I think in order to kind of bring us together as a community again, I would like to get in front of that person, have an open dialogue. There's so much more interaction face-to-face versus, you know, sitting behind a keyboard. I think you could definitely read someone a little bit more. I mean, it's so easy just to type something, and again, not add any consequences. So I think getting out in the public and being face-to-face with everybody is a huge key to that.
Brew?
I think I have a little bit different take on these guys. Social media is sadly the number one place that people go for their information, right or wrong, accurate or inaccurate, it is the number one place they go. If you want to know what's going on in your town, what do you do? You log onto Facebook and you look at community Montros to see, well, what's going on, because that's where everybody posts up. A council member has to use good judgment in knowing when to respond and when not to. Face-to-face, of course, is always better, but a lot of people don't, they just don't have that time, or they choose not to take that time. So it has to be used responsibly, and it does need to be utilized more efficiently or better than what we have. And I think also, as we change council over and it becomes hopefully a more cohesive unit, you'll see less conflict on the social media page. It'll become calmer and hopefully nicer. So that's my take on it.
Alright, Kirby?
Well, I think that if it's, if they're complaining about a decision that was made, or they have questions about something, that it's, it's easy to answer that question for everybody who's looking at it, because it's not just one person who's looking at it. There's hundreds or thousands of people that are just going to read what's going on, and they may even not comment, because they just want to watch instead of getting involved in a gift war. So, and I think just giving a nice response of what's going on, why the decision was made, is the first step. You know, and if they still have more questions after that, and it can't be answered through a keyboard-to-keyboard relationship, then it's time to either give them your number, say, "Call me, we can talk about it," or say, "Hey, do you want, if I come over, you want to talk about this in person?" Or, "Hey, we can go grab a beer down at one of the local places, and we can talk about this some more if you want." I think that it's just taking steps so that everybody knows what's going on. And if they still have questions, and still want to know, then you do the face-to-face, but the communication is key.
Wonderful. Alright, next question. You have one voice, one vote. How will you use that to improve Montros? Sorry, Sam?
One voice, one vote. Well, I mean, for me personally, I don't know what's best for you. I don't know how you live your life. So what I want to do is I want to have that, again, open communication and listen to everybody before I make my informed vote. I mean, I'm all about, again, I don't know what's best for you. You guys live your own life, I have my own life, but I want to take all that input from you and make an informed decision. That's how I would approach that.
Brew?
I would really like to know whoever asked the question, maybe they could elaborate a little bit more, because there's something, there's a question they really want to know, because everyone knows it's one person, one vote. Okay? What are you really wanting to know? If that person is here, I'd really like to have more information on it.
Does anyone want to explain a little more? No? Alright.
That was my question. And my question is, after observing City Councils and other several towns, I've worked in Crystal Lake for more than 30 years, each person has one vote, and the question is, how are you going to work together with your one voice?
That's a good question. That's a good question. I think-
Any suggestions on the answer already with the question about communication?
I think some, but you're correct. I think the perception, at least that I have, is that often we come into council meetings to see how fast we can race through and get out. You know, how quick can we wrap this up and be done in 30 minutes or an hour? Rather than taking the time to address an issue, and if it takes five minutes or if it takes an hour to discuss something, so that you can all come to a mutual agreement. Again, nobody's going to agree 100% all the time with anybody. You don't agree 100% with your spouse, and they're supposed to be the most important person in the world. You're certainly not going to agree with everybody on that all the time. It's how you talk and talk it out. I don't know if you actually remember, there was an ordinance issue, and actually Jamie Kirkdell was very involved in that. It was a huge ruckus, there was a lot of people, there was a lot of conversation, and I'll tell you honestly, Jamie and I were opposite ends of the spectrum. He was completely one way, I was completely the other. But we sat here in this room and talked for probably three hours, and came together to a solution that worked for everybody in this room. That's what needs to be done, whether it takes, again, five minutes, three hours, that's how you use your vote.
How's that for time?
Yeah.
Alright, Kirby?
Well, I mean, I'd use my one vote for what's best for everybody, not what's best for me, what can I get out of it. My one vote is one vote for the 3,000-plus citizens of Montrose, and if that number keeps growing, it's that one vote for everybody who's there. And I'll use my one voice to voice what my concerns, my thoughts, feelings are on the subject, and to talk to the other council members about what can we do to, like Brew said, to compromise? What can we do to meet in the middle if we're completely different on how we feel something should go? And that's, that's how politics should be handled. It shouldn't be, "I hate you because you think that way," or, "You hate me because I think this way." It should be to work together, together for what's best for everyone, and not just, "What can I get out of this? What does someone else want me to do? How does this person want me to vote? Because they're helping me out in whatever way." It should just be, your one vote, your one voice should be one more that's speaking for everybody who elected you.
Good. Okay, so these two, I feel like they kind of go hand-in-hand with one another, but I'm going to break them apart.
You got to get Tom.
Oh my gosh, I'm so sorry, Tom! I promise I didn't deliberately forget about you.
I can't do the two words, "I"ed.
I've worked a lot of hours recently, so I'm really sorry.
It'll take a half minute.
I, I think the sign of a good leader is his ability to, his or her ability to win people over and influence people. And I think if you do a good job doing that, I think people see your perspective and where you're coming from. Compromise is always a key. As I was talking about negotiating with the refinery manager. I mean, he didn't get his way, I didn't get my way. We met, not only compromised. And I think the whole thing boils down to developing a win-win situation, a win-win scenario where both parties win. And I think that's what we need in a council right now, is where everybody wins, including the residents of Montrose, not just the people on the council.
It's not time, if you wanna talk, you know, I'll do it.
You got a minute sixteen left, aren't you?
Oh, that's like an eternity!
Alright, so Brew, you'll be up next on this floor. And I feel like we can just merge them together. But one, it's the top reason you live here and the second is what made you make Montrose your home?
Well, quite honestly, we were looking for a larger home. And I lived out of Coquado and also lived in Dassel. And I was working in Delano. And then I switched something in the cities and the commute was so ridiculously long, this seemed like a good compromise because I really didn't wanna go into the metro area. And as we looked at Montrose as a city, we thought, you know, it's a lot like us on Coquado and the town that I grew up in, which was by Old Minnesota. Very similar. Great place, houses were great value, found something fabulous, loved my neighborhood, we're the forgotten neighborhood down there, Rockville. And we loved it, absolutely loved it.
I didn't forget that shit.
Alright, Kirby?
When I was, when I was three, it was kinda made of my home. But I chose, I chose to stay here because I grew up here and I went to school here, all my friends were here. And as I got older, it just made sense to stay close to my family and to continue that, I don't wanna say tradition necessarily because it's only two generations, but just to continue to live here and to be where I'm at. And I love living in Montrose, I love the location. I don't wanna be any closer to the cities. And it's, it's nice and easy for me to go to work out farther west. And all my neighbors are great. I mean, my kid can go outside and they, they already know, whether they know my name or not, they know who his dad is. Probably isn't a great sign for him. They, it's a community. People care about each other, whether or not they know you, you know? And I've had it happen with my kid where he falls off his bike or scooter and the neighbor will stop and just be like, "Oh, are you, are you okay?" And I'm like, "Yep, yep, he's fine." And I see it all the time, even when I'm just driving to town. And I like that community feel and I like that everybody cares about each other. And that's what I want and that's why I stay here.
Tom?
Okay. I was born and raised on the south side of Chicago. And we had a railroad switchyard one block this way and a truck terminal one block the other way. And I always told myself that someday I'm gonna own some land, a house out in the country. So in 2010, my wife and I built a house in Deer Park, Washington, on 10 acres. I had a nice 30-by-40 shop. Then I thought I was gonna just die there. You know, my wife would dig a hole by tractor and leave me there. But come to find out that that wasn't, that wasn't the overall plan. My wife is from Hopkins originally, so we moved to Minnesota. And I liked the area out here because it reminds me of the country living that I was used to. And I didn't have the railroad switchyard and the truck terminal one block away from my house like it did in the cities. I didn't wanna move back into the cities. I found the people out here, once I moved in, to be very, very nice, very good neighbors. My one neighbor I hardly ever see because he works nights. He and his wife both work nights, so if I don't catch him by four o'clock in the afternoon, I won't see him for the next day. The other side, my neighbors have two, two children and they kinda, they come over whenever they see me outside. I'm kinda like the surrogate grandpa in the cul-de-sac, you know? So, I love living out in the country. We've got a nice piece of property, a nice home. That's why it hurt me kinda when I started hearing all the bad feelings people had about the city of Montrose. And I just felt that, you know, I needed to try, with my experience and skills, to try to do something to help that out.
Sam? Yeah. So it says the top reason you live here and then what made you make Montrose your home?
I like our open Broken Park, which is a very large city. Me and my wife, we lived there for five years. Hardly ever talked to our neighbors in those five years. Numerous houses either side of us were raided by swatting many times. It's nothing like waking up to a bold warning saying, "This is a SWAT team, come up their hands up." It'll chill you up a bit in the morning. We actually just started looking, I don't know, it's kind of out of wimp. I had actually wanted to look more towards Watertown. We were coming back through Maple Grove, just having a drive through Montrose. To be honest, I never heard of the city. A lot of love about that. We started driving around, found the Forest Creek neighborhood back there. And moment I started driving through there and everyone was waving, I said, "This is it. This is where I wanna make my home. This is where I wanna raise my family. This community is great." Just drive around the neighborhoods and wave at people. You don't see that in Broken Park. This is, this is a community. This is why I moved here. This is why I wanna stay here. This is why I wanna help us become and continue to be that. Those are the reasons why.
I saw that in Chicago a lot. Usually you had a gomer. Yeah, salsa, yeah, it's a little bit different.
Alright, if elected, what would be the number-one item you would focus on your first 30 days as a council member? Kirby, we're starting with you.
Like I, like I said before, I don't have this grand agenda that I wanna get passed and get done because I have a personal reason for having all of it done. My biggest thing that I wanna, that I would wanna do in the first 30 days is, I wanna get to know all the other councilmen better. I wanna know what they think we should do and if you have five opinions then on what you think Montrose needs. And if we're all on the same page and we all know what each other wants and thinks about how Montrose needs to go from here on out, I think it'd be a better way as, to have good teamwork. And that's what being in the council is, is you're working as a team for Montrose. And so that would be my big goal in the first 30 days, is to bring us all together and, you know, make a team out of it. Make it a team effort.
Tom?
Yeah, one meeting over a 30-day period. I'm not sure how much can be accomplished, but I would like to at least set the stage for a complete audit of City of Montrose finances. Not because I suspect any malfeasance or anything going on. I think we need to just make sure that we're following proper accounting procedures, record retention, doc data retention and all those kinds of things. And I think an audit would help bring some of those things out, the areas that we need to focus on as a city government, just to make sure that we keep the transparency and make sure that the community is plugged into every dime that the city spends because that money belongs to you. I've had some interesting conversations as I was walking through neighborhoods and, believe it or not, there are some people out there that have no idea that the city gets their money from you people, from us, taxpayers. Because one lady wanted a water park in town. And I said, "Well, you know, the city's not large enough for a water park. We're only 3,100 people or so." And she said, her comment was, "Well, the city's got all kinds of money." So I had to kinda run her through where that money comes from. So I believe that, you know, as a city council member and a city government, we owe it to the residents of the town to make sure that every dollar is spent wisely.
Thank you. Sam?
So, for my first 30 days, I mean, I'd like to sit down with city staff. Heard a lot of negative things coming from the city staff and how they're treated and such. And I wanna sit down with them. I wanna see where they stand. I wanna know what's exactly going on. I wanna be able to take that information, go back to the council and the mayor and say, "Hey, this is what we need to do." I mean, the city's really only as good as its city staff is. They're kinda the backbone of everything. So, I mean, if you treat them right, the city's gonna honor you. That's my first 30 days, I wanna sit down and try to figure out where everybody stands.
Brew? All good ideas, all things that should be done, most definitely. 30 days is a very short amount of time to focus on one thing. Although what I would like to see happen in the first 30 days is a workshop for the two councilpeople in existing council to formulate a game plan and figure out what direction. Because everybody needs to work together for, and I hate to use "for" agenda because that's not really the right word, but it's the one that people recognize. There needs to be something, a goal, a common goal that everybody's working towards, whether it is restraining your fiscal expenses or, you know, doing the staff. All those are things that need to be addressed. But I think in the first 30 days, it's getting to know people, meeting them, figuring out where the profit areas are and then having your, a council workshop to figure out how you're gonna fix all those things, how you're gonna work together to achieve that.
Alright. Okay, so next question. With the increase in taxes that we've seen over the past couple of years, what is your opinion on the recent school levy that's up for, on the ballot for November? And we are starting with Tom.
Well, I vote no against it. And the reason I do is that somebody at the school board was asleep at the switch over the last, I think their last increase was 2002. If they would've put a levy forth back in 2002 and then repeated it again 10 years later, that had a 10-year gradual increase plan to it, I think it would've been a little more palatable to the taxpayers. But to turn around and ask a taxpayer, "Give out another $550 a year" because of their lack of prior planning, I think is an injustice to the taxpayer.
Alright.
And I'm all for education and I'm all for kids, so. You don't wanna think I'm the cranky old guy down the end of Wagon Circle that doesn't like kids. That's not it.
Get off my lawn, you kid!
That's not the case.
Alright, Sam?
I agree with what Tom said. Having a child in elementary school, obviously, education would work. But, I mean, it's a huge job. I mean, that's, that's a huge burden to put on the city or the residents. Me personally, I think taxation is theft. That's just the way I look at it. But, yeah, I mean, weighing the pros and cons here, I mean, that's a huge, huge burden for you guys, even me, to take on. Still kinda undecided, but I know much way I'm weighing. So, yeah.
That's what he said.
Your turn.
Brew?
Well, we all know you're not gonna get ahead in life without education. You've gotta be able to do right, all those normal things that school should be teaching you. You need that additional education beyond your 12 years to really get where you wanna go. That being said, with six grandkids, I know the importance of having the school funded. However, this particular jump, going from $119 per student to almost $1,100 per student, in one jump, is too much, too fast. And if it was just, just this portion and nothing else, it probably wouldn't be as bad. But we're also looking at a small city one, like $100 bucks or less roughly, which is not bad. But now you're looking at 2.4% from the county as well. So you're not looking at $50 a month on your mortgage. You're looking at now $100, $110, $120 depending on your house. Now, if you escrow, you're gonna double that because you're not even on your escrow account too. So for me and my circumstance, I'd be looking at $230 and $250 a month. I don't have that. I cannot go to my boss and say, "Taxes went up, give me an extra $250 bucks a month after taxes." Not gonna happen. So realistically, at this point, had the school done it as a step-up increase, I would be for it. I am not currently.
Kirby?
Well, I, what can I say that's really any different to what I said before me? I'm on the fourth spot, really isn't that real? It's so easy, well. Yeah, no one wants to pay a whole bunch more taxes. Nobody does. Like Brew said, the city, the county, all but one commissioner just voted on a big tax increase. And now the school board. And my opinion is that everybody in the school district should be going to any meetings that the superintendents or the board members are going to and asking the questions of why this wasn't caught before? Why, why is this all of a sudden now, in 2018, are they trying to just throw this on and say, "Okay, here's our Hail Mary, we're hoping that we can land this and get what we want out of this"? You know? Like Tom said, why was this missed for the last 16 years? Why, why is it just now coming to light? And especially in a year that's a non-presidential election year where there's lower voter turnout. So, you know, those are all the questions that I would wanna ask. I think that's the questions that we should be asking the superintendent and the school board. And I'm sure there's a lot of people asking those questions and, you know, I think they just need to keep answering them. And, but right now, just from what they've put out online, I haven't seen a whole lot of people who are really in favor of it. And, I mean, I get that education's huge and everybody needs it, especially since I'm an elementary kid myself. But when you're increasing by almost $1,000, just like that, it's pretty tough to ask everybody else to just throw all that extra money out, especially for people who are on fixed incomes.
Alright, good discussion. Speaking of the school levy, Michelle, when is that meeting at the school?
Thursday night.
Thursday, so Thursday night, 6:30.
Yep.
They will have superintendent and some other folks there to help ask those, or answer those questions that y'all have. So if you guys want more information, I would urge you to attend, since you came here.
And he's still gonna be here on the 29th. And Scott Tillman will be here Monday night for the council meeting at 7:00. Yep.
Alright, so next question. If you are not elected, how do you plan to stay engaged in this community? Sam, you're up.
Um, well, yeah, going to continue to try to volunteer as much time as I have. Again, did some work on the Montrose Days Committee a couple years ago. Those folks are fantastic. It's all volunteer, they need help, they're there to do it. Parks and Rec, everything else, I mean, gotta be engaged in the community in order to have a community. So I think just volunteering my time would be another thing on this.
Alright, Brew?
Well, seeing as I've been doing this months and months before and missed by a lot of this much, I'm not gonna change anything. Still the council meetings, I'm still involved, I still talk to people wherever they need me, I'm at. You know, I'm not going to change anything. I'll still keep doing all the work.
Wonderful. Kirby?
I mean, I'm not gonna make promises that if I lose, I'm gonna go out and volunteer for every committee, commission and every opportunity there is just to kinda win a vote. I mean, I've now that I've put in for council, again, to run. And so I've already planned out that I'm gonna have all this time set aside for it. And if I'm not on, I have that time set aside to be a part of other committees, their commission, their volunteer stuff. And I really hope that anybody who really wants to be on council, even if it's the people that aren't here, they really wanna be on council, they really wanna help. And it's the same for me, that they, they should continue to help out. And all these committees and commissions need help. And that'll be six people that potentially could help out. And whoever they are for friends to help out. And I know that if I don't get elected, I, I will be helping out in one way or the other. And, you know, probably it'll be Montrose Days Committee, but we'll see who needs help after this is all said and done.
Alright, thank you. Tom?
Well, I have a vested interest in this community since we-
Well, I have a vested interest in this community since we moved here. So, I'll be involved in something. I'll be thrown in someone's side somewhere, I guess. I, I don't know exactly where. I can't say I'm going to be in this committee or that committee. I also, I have a heart for the... I know, based on the fact that I voted against the referendum, or I'm voting against the referendum, I still have a heart for the kids. I would like to do some volunteer work at the local elementary school. Be there to help kids read, do math, whatever the teachers would like, you know. Have a guy come in and spend some time with the kids to help alleviate some of their time and work with maybe the problem kids so they can focus on the rest of the class. So, and then I'm an American Legion member, too, so I plan on, you know, being a little more involved in American Legion than I have been to date.
He needs retirement, so he's got lots of time.
No, I'm not ripping your lease.
Alright, Brew, we're going to start with you on this one. Prior to running for city council, how have you served your community?
Sorry, Brew.
She's only got two minutes.
Yeah, only two minutes, Brew.
Oh, come on, it's not that much. Prior to this, depends on the community that I've lived in here. It's been specific to park and rec and planning a zone. And then volunteering where people need help. In other communities I have worked with, I was on the Shisawu County Sterling Society Board, so I've done things with that. I worked on, growing up in Wyoming, Minnesota, my family founded that town, so I worked on a book for the history of that city. And it, and it was for the Sesmond Annual and some things like that. So, there's always something that I'm working on somewhere, and I bring that in.
Wonderful. Kirby?
The, the two things really that I've kind of been on Park and Rec for a while, Brew. And I was student liaison to the city council until I was above age to be able to run, so then I wasn't allowed to be anymore. It's a state thing, I guess. Those are the two big things. Other than that, it's just, you know, six years ago, my dad and I brought, we brought a town team baseball back to the area for the first time in sixty-some-odd years. I mean, and some people might, might not even know that there is one around. And, but, I mean, sixty-some years without something like that going on. And I'd say that that's at least a mild accomplishment that I can pat myself on the back for, but hell, honestly, okay. This Park and Rec and student liaison.
Tom?
I was back in Seattle. I was president of our homeowners association in Brent, Washington. I was a board member on the Broadway Family Outreach, which was a ministry in Spokane, Washington, where we fed people every week and just tried to help them out. And I was an elder in the church. So, other than a couple of board positions on the homeowners association and being an elder, that was the term I had to use.
Wonderful. Sam?
When I lived in Broken Park, I, I've worked with Chucking Don... not Chucking Don, Stone Mountain Pet Lodge. They had purchased a plot plan and the city started to kind of fight against what their proposed plan was. So I did a lot of work with them in order to hit that development belt as far as from when I moved here. Again, I've done some stuff on Montrose Days Committee. I'm always checking the committee board. If somebody needs a hand and I've got the time, sure, I'll come over and help. Help with the building. Did some work for Ethical Rules of Inquire. Debbie helped some funds and some goods and stuff like that, too. So, you know, that's, again, this is the community that you live in. You want to invest some of your time with that.
Alright, thank you. Alright, Kirby, you're up. What are specific ideas to reduce costs and lower the tax burden for the city and also address the county taxation?
Well, when it comes to the county stuff, or school board, or state, or anything like that, you have to go to the own individual assembly and figure out what the purpose for all of that is and why they're doing this. But for Montrose specifically, if we want to lower the tax burden on everybody, the two big things that need to happen is more homes have to be built so that it looks better for businesses that are coming in. Businesses pay a big chunk of taxes. They get, they get taxed more on an individual house, obviously. And if we have more homes and more businesses here, that distributes what everybody else has to pay throughout everyone and will lower what each individual has to pay. That's, that would be my big plan is, is to how we can do expansion of more homes at a sustainable rate. Not just, let's throw up all these homes and then just hope that it takes, but a sustainable rate and then bring in more businesses. And I know that the council is out of work to try to bring in more businesses. And I continue that. And I work with all of those council members to bring in more businesses so that we can lower the taxes for everybody who's here because no one wants to pay more taxes.
Alright, thank you. Tom?
Well, I think the city is in desperate need of maybe some light manufacturing to kind of spread that tax, tax load out. And we also, you know, we need to, it's just like your budget at home. If you save a dollar here, you didn't save a dollar here. After a while, it turns into some serious money and you start saving it up. You know, I think, I, I'm not sure, we, we have our own city assessor. And I'm not sure whether that's a bargain to the city or not. I mean, do a little more investigating in terms of what Dewey charges for his services. But, you know, for the, we have like 1,463 parcels and the county charges $12 apiece. So if we're paying Dewey $20,000, this calculation comes off about 17.5, so we're saving $2,500 right there. Now, don't hold me to that because I'm not sure what Dewey charges, if that's really a good view or not. But it's things like that that we need to take a second look at to really find out whether we're actually saving money or we're spending more money than we need to. It's like every time we, at, at home, we have to tighten our belts, especially if this levy passes. I mean, we're going to have to tighten our belts a lot. And the city needs to do the same thing, just as well as our, our, you know, federal government. So, everybody has a budget. We need to stick to it and not spend more money than we have. And another thing is, in terms of development, we, we need to make sure that we don't get locked into a situation where we're paying for all the infrastructure for the developer to develop a piece of land and then they go bankrupt and pull out and we get left all the bad. So, that needs to stop.
See ya?
Yeah, I think in order to lower the taxes, we need some more rooftops in here. I mean, I've seen it time and time again, people are saying, "Why do we get more businesses? Why don't we get more businesses? Why can't I get a Chipotle here?" They're certainly, they're not going to come unless we have more rooftops. Again, we don't want to go too big for Kirby's saying here. But, I mean, I've seen the growth already, just in my own neighborhood. I mean, the houses have been going up. It seems like one's done every, every other day there. So, I mean, it's, it's getting there, getting to that point. But we need to go further. I mean, there's a good chunk of land in Forest Creek that's up for sale right now. I think, you know, just get into work with that developer, bring in some more rooftops, bring in some more population, I guess would be the word. Just kind of lower that tax burden for her.
Brew?
Well, we all want to see more business here. But sadly, we don't have any open business space. There's nothing for people to rent and there's not much space to build, especially on the Highway 12 corridor where people want to be. The land that is there, the people that own it currently, is pretty expensive. It is not, it should not be the city's responsibility. The city should never be a landlord. They should only be to hold their own property. They should not hold others. They always end up sitting on it. Preserves a great example. Sit on it for a long, long, long time. Ways to lower the taxes. Everybody knows, same answer, so it's like, you know, bring in more business. We're going to have trouble with that. Bring in more houses, great. The single easiest thing for us to do is look at the budget with a fine-tooth comb and go through it. Just one little thing. When you guys, how many here pay their water bill? Buy electronic versus dropping down a check. Every time you do that, that company, that PSN that you pay through, charges the city. We pay $800 a month. The city pays that. You don't pay that. Something as simple as adding a dollar fifty. When you pay your bill, instead of it being $80, you pay $81.50. You do that when you pay Excel Online or anyplace else, or Centerpoint Energy. Why would we not do that here? That's almost $10,000. That's not a small amount. Simple little things like that can save this city a lot of money to be used elsewhere.
Good? Alright. What are specific ideas that you have to reduce costs and lower the tax burden for city and also to address... Oh, wait, I just had to ask this question. Sorry.
Again?
Sorry. Alright, how do you plan to address the high cost of water slash sewer fees in the city? Tom?
Well, um...
Sorry.
I was kind of shocked at my water bill when I moved in here. We went off back to Washington to visit kids and grandkids and I accidentally left my sprinkler on every other day and came back to a $192 water bill. As I understand it, the money's made on water bills, the city is not supposed to make a profit on anything related to water and sewer. So I think, you mentioned the fine-tooth comb. We really need to go through how those numbers are calculated and what makes up that, that number you pay on the water bill. You know, all, you got a whole, the last four or five categories in the water bill are taxes of one sort or another. You know, it's kind of like what you're at your phone bill, same thing. Everybody gets their piece of the pie. But I think weirdly, we need to do, you know, I use the term forensic audit. We need to do a forensic audit of what, what it really costs the city to produce water for the people. Okay? We need to maintain the, the, the infrastructure for the water system. You know, we're, we're looking at some serious expenditures here in the near future to drill another well, wellhouse, and all this kind of stuff just to maintain water for the town. So, like I said, I think if we really go through and figure out exactly where that number comes from and what, what makes up that number, I think at least that would be the first start to try to get, get a handle on the cost of water here.
Thank you. Sam?
Uh, basically the same thing. I mean, you look at my water bill and it's, it's all some sort of tax. There's got to be a way to cut those. They're asking, it's ridiculous. It's, it's not as high as when I lived in Broken Park, but it is pretty damn high for such a small city. Just reduce, just those little itty-bitty taxes up in your water bill. It'd be huge. You know, I think, like you said, you have to go through it line by line, item by item, try to reduce where you're standing.
Alright, Brew?
Nobody's going to want to hear this, and I'll tell you what. I'm elected, this is what you will get. You're not always going to like what I tell you, but I will always tell you the truth. Our water bills, believe it or not, are not that high. I took my bill into Delano, went into the municipals there, and we went through it item by item, line by line. Our water bill ends up being $5 a month cheaper than Delano. But you won't hear that on social media. The water bills here are, are not really out of line. They're very comparable to what I paid in Dassel. They're comparable to what I paid in Cokato. The taxes, sadly, are mandated. Most of those taxes are nothing that we can do anything about. Just like on your phone bill, they're mandated. You can't, there's nothing you can do with them. One of the things that could help us potentially with long haul, not having to raise them, would be giving waiver lists a notice that they need to do something differently. We take on all of waiver list waste and we're nearing capacity at our treatment plant. And we're going to have to expand, rebuild something. That has to be addressed rather than potentially raise it down the road. It, it's not going to get any cheaper, sadly. It is the way it is. Like Tom was saying, you're mandated. We cannot make money on that. So it is what it is, literally. You can sit, go through it with Wendy, with the mayor, whoever, and they'll lay it out item by item. It's just the cost of doing it. It's the cost of the chemicals. It's the cost of, of equipment. It's the cost of staff. It's, it's simple numbers. There's, there is nothing we can do for it except maintain it, keep it from going up.
Good? Two seconds, Brew. Good job. Kirby?
Wow, I don't... I think we should just drop the mic. You know, I, I agree with what, what they're all saying. But if there is a way that we can find to not have it go up and to even decrease even if it's biased a little bit, however way that's possible, I think we can do it. And I think that if that's the biggest concern the city has, that should be what we look into. And if, if there's no solution to how we can drop it down even a little bit, then just we come out and say that, just flat out say, "You know what? Sorry, we can't decrease what it is. We can't take any, any extra money off of this. And we're sorry, but it's just, that's how it is because we can't lose money on it. Can't make money, but you had to stay even. And if there's not a way to take any money off, then there isn't. If there is, then we should do it. And that's the responsibility of council and the city to all the citizens.
Thank you. Alright, Sam, what's your... What are your plans to create unity of purpose with what has been described by many as a dysfunctional council?
Well, I mean, I've had a couple occasions with some of the council owners. I mean, I've worked with Michelle, Ben's my neighbor. I think just being able to have the ability to work with everybody is the big key here. This isn't, this isn't high school. I mean, this isn't, "I'm not going to go your way because I don't like you." And, I mean, this is real people, real lives here that we have. Done the high school BS, I mean. Just sitting down and being able to work with everybody, that's the direction the city needs to go. We're not going to move forward if we can't stop the petty BS. This bottom line.
The end. Alright. Brew?
The only way you solve it is by what's coming up in November. Your fault. You change the people out and you find personalities that work. It's just the way it is. I mean, if you can't work together, good lord. And one of you functioned like that in your job. How many think you'd have it? You would be fired. So, there's your job. Fire, fire the people that aren't, that aren't making it work.
Alright, that's it.
I was waiting for that. I was waiting for a second. I honestly enjoy working with people who have vastly different thoughts and opinions. And I, I think that when you have different perspectives on something, it, it really makes the decision that you're making and the end result that much better. And I can work with people who have a difference of opinion. And, you know, if you have to hash it out, you hash it out. If you have to yell at each other and to argue about it, then you do that. But at the end of the day, as a council member, it has to be about what's best for the city, not just that "I hate you" or "you hate me" or "we're just going to not ever agree on this one subject." It's what's best for everybody else. And, you know, you need different people on there. Then, then, like Brew said, vote them out. Vote good people in there. If I'm not the person that you think should be on that, then vote for one of the other people that are running. And, you know, then you keep doing that every couple of years until you get that match and you think it's just perfect. I'm not going to be perfect, but as soon as you don't like what's going on, change it. And I think that I can be part of that. And I can work with just about anybody, as long as they're willing to work with me and I'm willing to work with other people.
Tom?
You know, you can still have diverse opinions, but still have a unity of purpose. To kinda elaborate on what Kirby said, you know, what makes the world go round is people with different ideas and different attitudes coming from, you know, they filter the world through their own glasses of experience in their lifetime and things of that nature. I think in terms of unity of purpose, if you take, just take that piece of it off, you need to find a common denominator. And then once you find that common, common denominator, you can build on that, okay? But if you, if you just refuse to try to find a unity of purpose, something you can both agree, this is the direction we need to go, even though you have different ideas of how you get there, you can still work together to, to accomplish a solution to the issue. So it's a matter of, it's a matter of leadership, uh, influence, getting people to communicate.
Alright. Um, okay, next question, as a potential council member, how will you positively influence the community? Brew?
Once you're elected, you need to carry yourself differently. You can't be so flippant, you need to take everyone's, um, opinion and ideas seriously. So someone comes to you and something you think is absolutely silly, really not proven to lie in their face. You just, you handle yourself differently. You treat people with respect, you're out there, you're gonna be presenting yourself, interacting. I mean, it's just, it's just kinda common sense that there shouldn't, it shouldn't be rocket science to do this, you know? It really shouldn't.
Alright. Kirby?
Well, I, as, as a council member, I wouldn't go around and be bad mouthing all the other people that I'm working with, whether it's the city employees or the other council members, 'cause that, that doesn't do any good. If I'm going around as a council member telling you how much this person sucks, or that person's an idiot, or whatever, that's not gonna influence any positivity anywhere. I mean, if you have a beef with somebody, then you deal with it with them, not with the whole community. And I think that's a big thing, is that you try to bring the positives out, and then, oh, they might see it differently than I do, but, you know, we can agree on a common goal for better Montrose. And I think that would be the biggest influence that I can bring, is that just to not bring that negativity to everything that's going on. It's so easy to see the negative, turn the TV on and that's all it is, that's all you see on the news, it's just negative. And then you get that one heartwarming story, and then it's back to negativity. And I don't, I don't wanna be the person that just spews all of the negativity to everybody that I talk to around the community. I wanna be that beacon of hope, so to say, and just that positive light of, yeah, maybe we are different, but we're working together and we're gonna come up with a good solution for everyone.
Tom?
Well, I don't think I'm going to act any different if I'm elected on the city council than I did knocking on doors and talking to people through the community. Uh, 'cause it's like, what you see is what you get, you know, I, I can't play two different roles. I think at the end of the day, if you have your, still have your integrity and your character, that's the most important thing.
Sam?
I mean, I think it's just treat people how you expect to be treated. It's so simple, it's not even funny at all, ridiculously simple it is. I don't want to be treated like crap, none of you guys want to be treated like crap, so why should I treat you like crap? We're all humans here, we're all here for one thing, that's a better Montrose.
Good? Alright, Kirby, we're starting with you. What is your plan to address the aging infrastructure in the city without an adverse impact to the tax burden?
You know, kinda what Tom said earlier is that we need to go into the budget, and Brew said it too, Sam said it, we've all brought it up. You need to go into it and look at it, and stuff that you're spending too much on, you cut that spending. And if there is a huge need for something in the infrastructure that has to be done, that's, this needs to be done or there's gonna be a serious problem, that's first priority. And any of the money that you save in these other areas needs to go to that. And it shouldn't be, okay, well, instead of trying to go through the budget and weed out some of these little expenses that we can live without, we're just gonna tax everybody. No, that shouldn't be the solution, it should be go through, find the money, if you really can't find the money, then you go to the citizens. But that should be the very last thing, there's so many other ways you can go about it, whether it's grants, or loans, whatever. Going to the citizens, they take extra money out of our pockets to pay for something when we can, as a city council or staff, can go through and find the money in the budget somewhere to do it, and we can figure it out, that's what we should do. It shouldn't be the citizens have to pay for everything and the money is already there, we just have to find it.
Alright. Tom?
Well, I, first of all, I think we can save a lot of money by not paying somebody for a survey to tell us that the liner in the wells are crumbling and things of that nature. I mean, um, if we're doing proper preventive maintenance on the infrastructure in the city, and, and perform proper maintenance over a period of time, it should, uh, drag out the period of time before we have to start replacing things. Granted, there's gonna be that instantaneous failure one night of a pump somewhere that we have to, we don't have any choice, so we have to replace it on the spot. That's where you have monies in, in the budget to take care of those kinds of things, kind of a rainy day fund, for lack of a better term. But I think if we, if we stay on top of the infrastructure and, and keep a close eye on it as we're maintaining it, I think the, the, the times that we're gonna really get, you know, bit in the backside because something fails are going to be reduced, therefore saving us money long-term.
Good? Sam?
I think just going through the budget, typing your bill where you need to. I've had to do it in the past, it's basically the same thing, it might be a bigger pocketbook, but it's the same thing. You have to budget your money, and cut costs where you need to cut costs in order to upgrade infrastructure. That's what we do right there, but, and just going through the budget, cut the costs.
Alright, last one out, Lee, Brew?
I think the question was, how are you ready to pay for it, correct?
It says, what is your plan to address the aging infrastructure in the city without an adverse impact to the tax burden?
So, when I first started out, I said we need to rework our CIP, which is the capital improvement program. Infrastructure is part of capital improvements. Sadly, we had several previous councils that didn't address this well. We had public works come and ask for ten years, we need to do something about the well. And it kept getting pushed off, and pushed off, and pushed off. Rather than setting money aside each year for it, so that it could be replaced, they waited until it was at critical mass. We're number four on the state list. If something wasn't done with the well, the state takes over. So it got addressed by this council, but it should've never gotten to that point. We need to go back and plan for this stuff. The city is aging, and these things are gonna happen. None of us like it, we're all gonna have to have our roads tore up at some point, have sewer and water and such replaced. But like everyone has said, um, rather than making it be a tax burden onto the residents, if we do it, again, small increments, uh, use the school as an example, don't hit everybody with a thousand dollar tax bill. If you saw your taxes go up from the city, Steven, five dollars a year, if you knew that was going to infrastructure, it wouldn't be so hard to swallow. And if the city came to you and said, oh, guess what, we didn't plan for this very well, now, now we gotta, everybody's gotta fork over two hundred bucks. Everybody would be enraged. So let's look at it from a practical point, rework that capital improvement plan and plan for these things to come along, because they are going to. It's not a matter of if, it's when.
Alright, next, uh, person up is gonna be Tom to start. I'm gonna ask this question cautiously. I feel like I have to ask it, 'cause I said that I would ask all of the audience questions. Uh, the question is, how do you feel about when President Trump comes up?
I'm first, yeah?
You're first.
Well, I, I voted for the man. I really like what he's doing for our country. Uh, I like his intestinal fortitude and his stamina. Uh, I didn't elect him as my spiritual leader, he was to say. Uh, he's, he's very, he's very pompous and he's very narcissistic, but I think he's a damn good president.
Sam?
Well, I, I didn't vote for Mr. Trump, I didn't vote for Hillary, I'm just gonna get that clear. Do I like what he's doing with the country right now? Yes. Does his ideology appeal? Thank you, it's a big word for me. Can I mesh with mine? No, not really. I mean, I'm, I'm basically a libertarian, and, I mean, I feel like everybody should just be able to do whatever, not that everybody wants, but you shouldn't have a whole bunch of rules and laws governing over you. But again, I like the direction it's going, um, the market seems to be up. So yeah, I mean, I don't have any real issues with Trump. Again, I didn't vote for him, 'cause he didn't go along my lines, so... But I didn't vote for Hillary, so...
Brew?
I think probably everybody that knows me knows they answered this question already. Yes, I did vote for Trump, I am a huge fan, not of his personality, but of, of his agenda and the things that he's accomplished. And I did tell G E N E when he came in that I loved him. So yeah, I'm not a big fan of, uh, some of the scandals and things that he's got, a lot like Tom. I didn't, didn't vote for him to be my minister, but, uh, boy, with what he's done with the economy and the way he has stood up and, and made his picks for Supreme Court and Fattman, I'm a fan.
Kirby?
Well, it's Sam, I didn't vote for him, I, I, and I will say I did vote for Gary Johnson, because a lot of what he believes in are personal freedoms, and I think that's how it should be, is it shouldn't be someone telling you how you feel of your life. But I do like a lot of the stuff that he is doing. There's, there's always gonna be stuff you're gonna disagree with, but I did not want him to fail, and I was not someone protesting saying, he's not my president. He won, he's my president, and I support him, I want him to do good, 'cause if he doesn't, well, then I'm not gonna do so well either, so... So, yeah, I, I do like how he is running our country.
Alright, uh, next question, what do you think is the most critical issue facing the current administration? Did everybody just wait for that, that question to be asked? Alright, did you get that question?
Thanks for coming, you guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, you guys. What do you think? What do you think is the most critical issue facing the current administration? At which level, city or federal? Period. I would assume city, since we're city council, but it is not clarified.
You're all, you're all in a trouble, so we weren't sure.
I didn't go in order, I just figured I'd lighten the mood with Trump one event, so...
It moves pretty much.
Sam, you're up. What do you think is the most critical issue facing the current administration?
Communication.
Period?
Period.
Okay. Brew?
I think the perception, whether it is true or not, is that people feel like they're not getting the whole story, or they're not getting the truth. And that, again, may be real or it might be perceived, but that's probably one of the biggest things. We've got several, we've discussed them all tonight, of, of things that are fairly serious that we gotta deal with. That's probably the biggest one, 'cause people don't, they don't feel like they can trust you, and you're lost on every aspect.
Alright, Kirby?
Uh, the biggest thing is teamwork, that it doesn't seem, from the outside looking in, like they all work together when they, when they should try. And I know that there are a couple of people that do try to bring it in and, and to work better together, and there's some resistance. And I think that's the big thing, is teamwork. And, you know, right now, we have, we have a team leader, and, and Michelle is mayor, who, she's trying to really work it the right way. And everybody needs to, to work, not just with her, but with the other council members. And that's the big thing, is you need to work as a team to get things done, where you're just gonna sit there and spend meals for two years.
Alright. Tom?
I think the, the city council, the, the city government needs to focus on, you know, city of Montrose residents' agenda, and not have personal agendas that are, are trying to be accomplished. It's, it's back to my earlier comment about leadership, it's not, you know, there, there needs to be a strong leader in the city government that can pull people together, bring people together, and stop the petty fights and arguments and all those things going on, 'cause we're just a gross waste of time to be accomplished, I think.
Next question, it was asked on social media a while back, how you would help with the volunteer problem, and all of you stated you would be available, but many of you have not been seen. Why is that?
Uh, Brew? Sorry, Brew. Well, up until the last couple of months, you have seen me, it's just been the last few months that you have. It is actually something that I noticed, that I've been trying to find a way to deal with. I, I wrote an op-ed, a newspaper published, both, uh, Carol Journal and, uh, the...
Drummer?
Yes. Just trying to think it along, anyway, couldn't put all the words together, sorry. And I discovered that this is a problem everywhere. We have become, like Tom, maybe it was Tom that had said, uh, you end up going to work and to home, and it becomes groundhog day. And getting people out of that, it's not enforced in school anymore. I, I think all of us, when we were growing up, we were taught this civic responsibility, that you give back to your community and you volunteer. People went to church, they learned in the volunteering there, they learned you teach Sunday School, things like that. Nobody does that anymore, it's just gone. And I don't know how we get it back. Sadly, the group that's my age and older, we're all dying off, and that, that stuff's just going away. I don't know how, how we will get it back. How am I gonna be present in the future, is that, was that a part of the question?
Concerned is the, the volunteer problem, everybody stated that they would be there, but they've not been seen as of yet.
So, in another month or a couple of weeks, when this is done, you're either gonna see way more than you want to, or, or, uh, I'll go back to doing what I was doing, and I'll find something, some other areas to help work in.
Alright. Kirby?
Well, I think since this question was asked on Facebook, and, at least from what I've seen, there have been a whole, type of a lot of things. But I will be honest, is that I don't often make a lot of free time for myself personally, and probably not good. Health-wise, to not make free time for yourself to do stuff like that, but I get caught up in a lot of my own things, and that's one of my things that I'm putting on myself for the next year, next two years, whatever, of try to give back, try to do more, try to be more available and to make time for myself, 'cause it's, it's not just better for the community and everybody that you're helping out, it's better for yourself and the community. And I like helping people, it's just, it's not planned, you gotta make time for yourself to be able to do that. And I'm not as good as Brew is at making time to help, and I'll be honest, so...
Alright, Tom?
Well, you know, to be profound, in the six months that I've been around here, I've spent a lot of the time knocking on doors. I think I've knocked on over seven... I think I've knocked on over seven hundred doors or so, just to talk to people and get a handle on, try to get my head around what's wrapped around, what's going on in the city of Montrose. I'm not sure if this was a reference point, but I know there was a post on Facebook that if city council members are really interested in helping the community, they need to go do this. Well, I'm not one to be manipulated into doing something that I'm not, I don't want to do or I don't feel like I should be doing. And I won't be intimidated by that either. If I volunteer for something, it's because my heart's in it and I really want to do it, okay? I'm not one to shy away from volunteering for anything. So, but like I said, I won't be manipulated into doing it.
Sam.
You know, I try to get out as much as I can, like Tom said, if your heart's not in it. It's not there. Having a school-aged daughter who's got a million other things going on and trying to balance that between work and, you know, making time for, you know, just for being my wife too, I mean, it's just impossible to say. To be honest, you know, and I try to volunteer as much as I possibly can, when the time allows.
Awesome. All right. Next question. What is your vision for the city of Montrose? And what are three major objectives that will move us closer to this vision? And Kirby is up.
My vision is sustainable growth. Like I said before, I don't want it to just be a jump, all of a sudden, boom, we're hit with all these houses and then, I don't know, they can't go home. I want sustainable growth. And Brew made a point that there is a lot of growth or expansion in businesses, but you know, if there's any possibility that we can, in some way, I think that would be a big thing. I guess my three things that, what was it, three things that you...
What are three major objectives that will move us closer to the vision?
Communication, teamwork, and balancing our budget. I think those are the three things that if we do all three of those, there's nothing that we couldn't do, the city council would benefit.
All right. Tom.
Well, my vision for Montrose is to have a community that people love living in and that are proud of and that the surrounding communities can look at and say, gee, Montrose is really, appears to be a really nice place to live. Growth is a key piece of that, to kind of alleviate some of the tax burden, spread it out a little bit. Safety for all of us and kids playing. And just creating a place that's pleasant to live and work and play in, where the community is not afraid to talk to each other and isn't afraid to go to someone without fear of, you know, repercussion that you're speaking to somebody on the other side, quote unquote. That's it.
Sam. What is your vision for the city of Montrose? And what are three major objectives that will move us closer to that vision?
My vision is for, to get to a point where somebody asks me where I live, and I say, "Montrose." And they're like, "Where is that?" A lot of times, it's just past Delma when I was twelve. I want people to know, "Oh, Montrose? I heard that's a great city to live in." That's my vision for the city. As far as the three things, communication, fiscal conservatism, and strong leadership.
Brew.
Not a whole lot to add to. I mean, it's, you know, when you say, "Dude," I mean, you know, it's, we all kind of have that same thought process. I mean, the only other thing that I could say I'd throw into the mix here is we have a visual problem here. When you drive through town and you look, you see what? Honestly, you know, I would like to see some E D A money used for low-interest or no-interest loans for our existing businesses, so that they can spruce up, I don't care what it looks like on the inside, as long as you're up to code, but the outside should be appealing. It should look like something like, wow, look at this city. It's small, but look at how great it looks. This is where I want to be. If they're taking this much pride in their businesses and on their main dragon town, everybody's got to be really into this community. It's got to be a great bunch of residents that are here.
All right, y'all, we have four questions left. Are you guys all still in this, or is everybody kind of sold out at this point? We're all in it?
I'm good. Very good.
You guys are still good.
Need to win it.
All right. Next question. What is your idea of the relationship between council and city staff? And how will you, or what will you do to establish a positive working relationship? And Tom is up.
Well, we keep beating this communication thing up, but I think that's really fundamental and I need approach to getting along with city staff. You know, we had a retention problem and it seems like no one knew why people left. I'm not sure if anybody took the time to talk to, you know, people or find out why they were disgruntled, what the problems were. I think from, you know, in the years I've had people working for me, personal management, I've always had defined objectives. Pay by performance, though if you look at, I know we have union issues, so pay by performance doesn't always work all that great. But I think if a person knows what the expectations are, you set expectations, not where they're unattainable, but where it's a stretch to get there. And I think that open and honest communication between the people that work for the city and the council members needs to be key. I mean, without that, you can't function. So that's really it.
Sam.
I'm going to feed a dead horse here. Communication. You need to listen. Your city workers are on the front line, they know what's going on. Just having that open here, and again, treat people with respect, how you want to be treated. I'm sure Brew's going to say communication too, and Kirby's going to say communication. It is key. And my understanding is, they don't feel like they're being hurt. As an employee at my job, if I don't feel like I'm being hurt and I'm just kind of being brushed aside, how hard may it really, really, really get to work? I'm going to start like who's off the last. So just listen, have that communication.
Brew. Communication is part of it. There has to be trust, a lot of trust. And both sides, and currently, it's starting to rectify itself, but in previous councils, that's been a big problem. Council people don't trust each other, the staff doubts each other. Who can I trust? Who can't I trust? If I talk to this one, are they going to tell that one? And so everybody's suspicious of the other one, and then nobody works together. That's the biggest, to me, that's one of the biggest things, is that building that trust factor.
All right. Kirby.
Like the backbone of all of that communication and trust, it all leads back to honesty. I mean, you don't just go in there and tell someone what they want to hear, so then they like you. And they don't like someone else, and then turn around and tell someone something else, but they like you. It's just, you be honest. If someone doesn't like what you have to say when you're being honest, well, at least you can walk away from the situation saying that I told them how I felt or what I think is going on. If you start with just being honest with each other, even if it's just the smallest, what you want versus what they want, I think that's a huge step. If you're honest with each other, the trust will come, the communication will get better, and just all training, all of a sudden, the worth of training.
All right. All right. Third and almost final question. How will you work to manage housing developments and prevent passing on infrastructure costs left to the city by failed development enterprises? Sam, you're up.
Just sitting down at the table, talking with these developers, I don't know, being here just two years, I mean, I don't really know what has happened before I got here. So I mean, as far as stuff that's failed in the past, I simply don't know. I can't answer that question. But you know, sitting down at the table with the developers and coming up with a solid plan is key for my advice.
Brew. I think part of this problem has partially been solved. Council recently made it to where there's larger escrow funds that have to be collected for things. The developer is now 100% on the hook for all of the fees. They've taken steps to prevent getting hung out to dry, which was good. They don't operate it, and I mean, they've already started working on it, so as long as they stay on that path. Planning and zoning's been excellent with how they have looked at things, so you don't end up with, you know, landlocked parcels or things like that. You know, they've really been very thoughtful at how they've been approaching things and looking at all aspects of a planned development.
Kirby.
I've worked with planning and zoning. That's not the only commission that I've worked with. I'm not just going to single out one because I like it better, but...
Of course, you do your mom's own.
Not very healthy. But I've worked with, you know, planning and zoning, and I'd be at those meetings and I'd want to know what's going on. And now that the city's got some of these in place that we're not on hook for all of these extra costs and doing all this, like what happened twenty-some years ago when they were doing all this and the city was working over money and whatnot. And I think that just being in some of those meetings and prospective builders and you sit there and go, well, are you going to fill the houses as you go? Or are you going to just pop up fifty of them and then just, you all sell them? You know, just get to know all the facts, get to know everything that's going on, and then go from there. I give you a generic answer and whatnot now, but really, it comes down to the situation. You've got to know everything that's going on at that time. And I wouldn't want the city to be forced to pay any of those costs. And I think that's going in the right direction right now.
Well, this is where history comes in extremely important. The best part about history is knowing it, so you don't make the same mistakes over and over again. And to Brew's point, you know, some of the issues with, you know, providing infrastructure to a developer, because we're trying to attract kids in here, build a bunch of homes and everything, and then they go bankrupt and you're left holding the first role of infrastructure investment. So like I said, I think we learn from history. At least that's, we're turning the corner on it.
All right. Second to the last, y'all. With the ordinance we have in place, are you looking to change everything? Which one? I don't know. Does anyone want to chime in?
That was a really easy one. I think we need to go through them. We need to look at all of our ordinances. There's some in there that don't make any sense. They don't apply any of this stuff regarding houses to build or puke and things like that. I mean, they're just, they're not out there anymore. They need to just be done away with, you know?
There's a lot of duplicity and confusion in the process. So I think the city planner's working on that, I don't know.
Ordinance changes?
Mm-hmm.
He spoke by the turn.
Screwed it all up.
Yeah, I agree with Brew. You know, just get a look at them. Ones that shouldn't be there anymore, that don't make sense from, you know, 1845, then maybe we can, we'll get updated some of them or get rid of some. Not that there are any, it's an example. But you know, just take a look at them. No.
Sam, got anything to say?
No, I mean, it's pretty much the same thing. Go through it. Obviously, there are some that, in my mind, should be reworked as far as what I can do on my personal property. I think, again, just being the person I am, I have to do pretty much whatever I want to do on my own property. I would start digging some of those up, up to the most part, I mean, same thing.
Nice work. All four of you in a minute thirty seconds. I'm impressed. All right. So last question that I have that's written down. And I tried to formulate it based off of a comment that was made on the, one of the community pages, on the reminder post that I have done today. And so I just worded it as, "The council recently increased their pay significantly. Would you have been in support of this? Why or why not?" Kirby.
Personally, just for myself, I would admit, because like I said before, I can figure out what's going to be paid. And I get that it's a lot of work and everything like that. That's just my own personal feeling on it, that, you know, if you're doing it, you don't have to be paid for it. But on the other side of it, if you're doing your job and you're doing your job well and you're getting paid for it, people who are doing their job well should get rewarded for doing their job well. If you're not doing your job well, however, probably shouldn't have a job anymore. But in that instance, I probably would have said no for the reasons that were given. Just from what I had heard and talking to people, I would have been in support of doubling it. But I would personally like to look at it and say that if this is the amount that they're going to make each month, that should be the max. And they can work their way up to it by, you attend meetings and if you only make this many, well, you don't get that full amount. It should be based on how you're doing your job and if you're actually showing up for everything that you're supposed to and that. That would be what I would want to do with it, is it be, that if there's a per-meeting fee up to this max amount, obviously not like before, but up to this max amount of $200, then I'd be in support of it, because then it's based on you're actually doing your job and you're there doing what you're supposed to, and that's what I'd do.
Tom.
Well, I was at that meeting and I don't know if anybody watched the video, but I was pretty vocal against it. It wasn't, I mean, we're not talking about a huge amount of money here. No one's going to get their yacht they've always wanted, you know, because of the city council. However, it was the, it was just the appearance and the way it was done was like slam dunk, you know, $200. It just, it just set funny inside. There was no debate, no negotiation, no conversation, basically. It was $200 or nothing. I, you know, the point I made is that, you know, when you are, I mean, this is a volunteer position. You know, it's like you're dedicating the time to try to make the city a better place. Make Montrose a greater community of us.
Trademarking.
So like I said, it's not a monetary issue. And to be perfectly honest with you, the part that bothered me was, you know, Michelle had made a comment about, you know, how when she asks council members to attend a meeting or do this, they don't have time. And I was trying to figure out how in the world an extra $100 a month makes more time? That was the whole issue I had. So like you said, I was busy.
Sam.
I'm going to come up and say that I'm against it and anything that I don't get will be donated back into the city.
Brew.
I would also have been a no vote on that. I do understand the concept behind it. There's two schools of thought, is to do it for the love of the city, which is what my vein is. The other one was, well, if you pay more, maybe you attract more talent or better people. Either you have the love of the city or you don't. More money is not going to give you the love of the city. I do understand that there are many cities around that do pay more. In fact, I was just reading about one, it was like Winston or Waconia, one that paid like $2,400 a month. And I was shocked. I was thinking, how much of that could go back into their city? You should be doing this for the love of the city, not for a paycheck. So I definitely would have been a no. And if I'm elected, that will be one of the things that we revisit about rescinding them.
All right. So that's all of the questions that I have. We can either... We can either be done, unless anybody else has come up with any other questions, I would be okay with the audience asking a question as long as it's appropriate and it addresses our account, every candidate. That's it.
Where do you stand as far as, when we're talking about the budget, making cuts and saving money and everybody has money in their pocket, where do you stand on the regional park, the money used for it? And the possibility of maybe having another survey done to see how many people actually agree with the money being put into it versus the dollars other costs coming up?
All right. So Tom, you would be up?
Personally, I don't know all of the history on the regional park. As I understood it, it was offered to the city, the city couldn't down, turned down something free. So the Army Corps came out, did all their work out there. We're not going to get any benefit out of the regional park for probably another two to three, maybe five years. And in my opinion, it's going to be a sinkhole for money. And what was the second part of the question? I forgot that.
Do you think that there should be maybe another survey with, maybe to see how many people actually agree with it versus, you know, if they see the actual cost involved?
I do. I don't believe we need to pay for a survey. I think we need to open it up to the public for comment, maybe a brief questionnaire and how, if, if and how they would use it. And then make some decisions after that, whether we want to put more money into it or not. I mean, we've got a $10,000 budget for, for development of parks this year, and I know Forest Creek is banded together, trying to formulate a way that it makes some money to put playgrounds, put on Forest Creek, because we have a nice grassy area and that's it. Because out of the eleven, well, twelve parks counting the regional, we've only got play equipment in six of them. So, you know, I'd rate for kids to run around them, but they can do that in their backyard. They really need something to play on. So I'd rather see the money invested in, use the playground equipment for the existing parks rather than putting more money in the regional.
All right. Sam?
I do think there needs to be a survey done. I think that needs to be totally revisited. Trying to understand the whole Army Corps coming out, doing a level and stuff like that. But I think as, as a community, the community needs to have a voice on to how this is used, how to go forward, if you're shaking, you go forward. So I think getting the community's input is, is key to everything that we do here.
Brew? I probably have a little bit more input on this than anybody because I've been intimately involved with this. I do think it still needs to go forward. I think the plan that is in place, there is money set aside of the LGA that comes every year for that park. So it's not, it's not your city tax dollars, it is state, it is still tax dollars, but it's statewide. It's government money, local government aid that comes back to the city that is offset for regional park. We have been pursuing grants and other things for that, and that still should be the vein that it goes. There was a survey done, but I can tell you that about every five years, most of the city changes over. So what you got three years ago or four years ago is going to be completely different than what you're going to have today. And you would have to keep redoing that every three or four years because you're going to have all different people and all different ideas. I can tell you the original survey, the top three things that were on that survey were not included on the original drawing. They wanted a swimming pool, splash pad, dog park. None of them were included on there. In my time surveying on parking rack, I fought and fought and fought and fought for a dog park. How many in this room alone have a dog? I bet you to say probably 90% of people in this room have got an animal that they would take care of. I think it's a need. I do. And it's not just a want, it's something, so we don't have dogs running all over all the time. We don't have all the posts on social media, hey, this dog's in my backyard, do you know who this dog belongs to? There's ways to do it without using our tax money at all. Just continue the path that we're on. And as far as the other parks, don't have anything in it? Turns up. Can I finish my sentence?
Bye.
The amount of money that it costs for just a tiny little playground, if you look at the one in Rock Brook, over $50,000 for that. It is a teeny, tiny, little, little spot. There just is not money for it unless grants are taken or fundraising is done. And what Adam has been doing, Adam Mayer, he's just kind of taking the ratings on that and working towards it and it's awesome. And if we can do that, almost do the old fashioned fundraising for some of these parks, we'd get a lot more done, a lot faster.
All right. Kirby?
I would like to see another survey done because there's, like Brew said, the top three were, were not included on that. And I do think a dog park would be great. And there are some things that we can take off of what the plan is now. I think, yeah, maybe it will be a money pit, but I also think it could be a great asset to the city. I mean, you could have, you know, there's supposed to be soccer fields out there, but how often are they going to get used? Like some of the things aren't as practical as maybe we thought they were three, four, or five years ago. And I know that the surveys when they came back, there wasn't, you know, as many surveys as there are households in, in town. And if we could find a more effective way to get a survey done, I think that'd be, that'd be good to have the full input or at least, you know, half of the city input on it would be great. You know, there's some things that are out there that I think maybe we have planned for the regional park that we could take off of it. We don't necessarily need to have on there, it's not a huge want or will be a huge use. And maybe some of that money that they have, that is planned for those things, we go to a different area that will get way more use and will attract more people to, to come through here. So, I mean, if it's done smartly, then, then yeah, I'd like to see the regional park keep going forward. But if it's just going to be, we're going to put a bunch of things out there that multiple people don't want, then I'm not going to support the regional park continuing.
All right. Does anybody else have a question? Okay. So thanks, everyone in the audience that chose to come tonight and ask the questions. I think it's really great, but there's many new faces that I haven't seen. I know I've been a little lost in the past few months, but generally speaking, I have been very involved and most of your faces are new. And then I'll just open it up for any closing statements from the four of you. And we will start with Sam, since you were the last in opening statements.
I just want to say that really these other three, I mean, you've got pretty solid candidates up here. You should really feel good about these are the three that you've got here. They've got, they've got a good vision. There's a lot of love for the city in these three. So I think you've got good choices going forward. That's really all I have to say.
Brew? Thank you all for taking the time. You make time for what's important. Obviously, if you're here, the city and what, what it does is important to you. So thank you, appreciate that. Thank you guys for hosting. And I agree with Sam. Of all of the choices that you have running for, for council, obviously, we made time for what's important for here. I, of course, I would love to be elected. I want your vote. I'm not going to lie to you to get it. And even if I don't, any of the four of us, you're going to have great counsel. You just are.
Kirby?
I agree with what, what both of them are saying is that, you know, anybody out here you're going to pick, it's going to be your choice. And I just asked everybody who, who did come and who was watching the video and that maybe I'll make your decision right now. Go home and think about it, sleep on it, you know, really think of who said what that really aligns with what you want for Montrose. And if that's me, then pick me. And if it's, if it's any of these other three and you don't vote for me, then, then good. At least I know the city's in good hands. Thanks for coming and thanks for doing all the work and manning the camera, I'm Adam Mayer, I appreciate it.
Tom?
Well, once again, I'm last again, and everybody's kind of said everything, but I, I just want to thank everybody for taking the time to come out tonight and, and listen to us loviate up here and answer your questions. You know, it's, it's, it's kind of a situation where I think it was, I'm trying to remember the name of the movie, where the guy said, "Choose wisely, young man, choose wisely." And that's kind of what you're faced with right now, is trying to make the right decision to put the right people, you know, because the next, the next four years can be pivotal in what happens in the city of Montrose. So if you choose wisely today, it should help that next four years go much more smoothly in the direction you want it to go. So once again, I would appreciate your vote and thank you for your time today.
My husband's a fast teenage reader, but... Brew?
Was it Bradlin? Yeah. Well, I've got five years, so I'd...
I was thinking Indiana Jones.
Or Indiana Jones.
I was thinking Indiana...
That's a Jennifer Devine. No, it's a Devine.
Take this one outside.
I do thank you all. And I guess the, the very last thing I'm going to say is if you have any questions of the four candidates that weren't able to join us, certainly try to reach out to them. I don't know if they've been door knocking, if you've had the opportunity, but I would urge you, if you have any questions specifically that you would like their response to, to attempt to get ahold of them and see how they would answer and if it aligns with your, with your vote for November sixth, because it is an important day.
You do all the campaign pages and you did not say one of them?
No, they just messaged me directly. You can run it to me if you want.
Double vote for him.
You've got to stop. I'm sure he's technical.
All right. Thanks, y'all. Hold on, hold on, stop it. I do want to thank all of you guys that have come out here today and taken the time, like you said, to come and meet your candidates. A lot of you guys discussed the budget and questions on that. Our next finalizing of budget for 2019 is on December 26th at, probably here. So, I mean, if any of you have any questions or concerns, you're more than welcome to come.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I'd like to say something. We've been paying attention for years. One of Montrose's major problems is that nobody's paying attention for the most part. We've had overpaid city officials for years. We had a city administrator for years who was probably making college dropout, with no masters, we know nothing. It was probably making at least twice what she was. We spent thousands on a, the council spent thousands on...